Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board meeting. We're going to ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance, we'll say it together, and also while we're standing for a moment of silence, let's remember the family of Ashley McKnight, teacher at Black Fox School. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the nine hundred states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Good evening to all in attendance and to the school board and to Dr. Gilbert. Could I get a motion for the approval of the agenda? Some move.
Second.
Has been a motion and second, all in favor, aye. Aye. Thank you. Communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, it's a real pleasure Chairman Wade for me to introduce the new Director of Human Resources, Mr. Ralph Ringstaff. Ralph, if I could ask you to come to the podium, please. I think you're going to be absolutely delighted with Ralph. He brings with him a wealth of experience with human resources, is certainly has been in the schools, has been a teacher, worked at the central office. So I'd like, Ralph, if you would just say hello to the board. And we welcome you here. I'll let you have, we'll even let you have the podium, right?
It is a great pleasure being a part of Murfreesboro City Schools. I'm excited to join the team. Dr. Gilbert has a lot of energy and enthusiasm, and I'm excited to work with her in the Murfreesboro City School system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Thank you, Ralph. This summer, we had twenty-five participants in the first annual, I hope, Leadership Academy, and I've asked those participants to come tonight, and they didn't know that I was going to ask them to do this, but I'd like for you all to, your teachers or, you all would just line up, kind of form a line by the podium, because I'd really like for you to introduce yourselves. These folks came during the summer from eight o'clock until three o'clock, five days, Monday through Friday, probably on about a month's notice, so a lot of them really made the effort to be there. It was interesting, because the last day, I think some of them really kind of hated to leave, because there was a real camaraderie and a real collaboration for them. So I'm going to ask you, please, to just introduce yourselves, and if you would, please, tell us where you teach and what you teach, and then if you would, please use one word that you think best describes the Leadership Academy and what it meant for you. So, Jackie, go ahead.
Hello, Jacqueline Simmons-Moore, so I teach at John Pitter, and I'm a behavior teacher for the older children. Empowering, informative. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenny Ratties, and I'm a first grade teacher at Skills Elementary. I would say the one word that describes our Leadership Camp was collaboration. We got to meet lots of people within our community, within our school system, and make some very good connections.
My name is Janisha Avon, I teach third grade at Skills Elementary. I would have to say the one word that would describe this summer's camp was inspiring. It inspired me to be a better teacher, a better leader, and so forth.
Good evening, my name is Laura Dunlap, and I teach at Case and Lane Academy kindergarten. And if I had to pick one word, I would say exhilarating, absolutely exhilarating.
Hello, I'm Cassie Holt, resource at Mitchell Nelson Elementary, and what I have to say that it brought was togetherness.
Good evening, Kristy Willis-Robinson, Black Fox Elementary kindergarten, I'll have to say we learned to build relationships.
Hi, Felicia Jackson, Case and Lane Academy, fourth grade. To me, it was enthusiasm.
Hi, Sarah Ryan, Case and Lane Academy, fourth grade, and to me, it was enlightening.
Hi, I'm Katie Peake, I teach at Black Fox Elementary in second grade, and the one word that I would use to describe the Leadership Academy is moving.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Klinge, I teach Special Education at Black Fox Elementary, K through six, and one word for me would be unified.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Lampkins-Todd, I teach sixth grade at Black Fox Elementary, and the one word I would use would be fulfilling.
I'm Cindy Stone Allen, and I teach third grade at Black Fox, and I learned through the experiences, there were some that gave me new breath, and then there were experiences that took my breath away. Of course, I go after her. My name is Kristy Nittern, I'm a school counselor at Northfield, and I think the word for me would be renewal. It gives me freshness and excitement again, and it's a good place to be right now.
Hard act to follow here. My name is Catherine Gordon, I'm music specialist at Bradley Academy, and the word I would choose would be honest, because it was very honest for us to find the gifts that we can bring that make each of us unique to make a child whole.
My name is Stephanie Turner, I'm a teacher at Bradley, I teach toddle, and the word I would use would be awesome.
My name is Francina Austin, and I teach sixth grade at John Pitter Elementary, and the word I would use to describe the Leadership Academy this summer would be uplifting.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Austin, and I teach sixth grade at John Pitter Elementary, and I would say just family and community. It was wonderful getting to know different people in our, in our city that we have connections with that can help us and our children.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Hall, and I teach fifth grade at John Pitter, and I told Jennifer not to say community, and she said it anyway.
My name is Tammy Neely, and I am John Pitter Elementary with a behavior class, kindergarten through second, and I think the word for me, maybe two words, encouraging and lots of hope.
Would you please join me, and thank you. When you get these folks in a room, there's so much energy, it's unbelievable. We had a few of them come to the principal's retreat, and when they entered the room, it was just amazing. So, one of our goals this year will really be to help them deepen their leadership, their knowledge. I really would like to see them going out into the community and speaking to different groups. Our teachers have tremendous amount of knowledge, and so we welcome the opportunity for these folks to go to organizations, to go to businesses, to do lunch and learns, because when you think about everything that teachers know, the things that they know about behavior, about working with parents, all the little acronyms that we use in education, so there's a real opportunity. So, for the public that is out there, I certainly encourage them to contact us and let a few of these folks come out and talk with them, because I think that it would be, it will benefit to them, and I think it's important that we, as a school district, that we make sure that our employees continue to grow, and that's obviously what these folks want to do. So I thank you for your support of them, and I thank them for their enthusiasm.
Ms. Phillips and then Dr. Andrews have something else to say.
Dr. Gilbert, thank you for your leadership and having, hosting this Leadership Academy, and I have to share that Mary and I, and maybe, maybe some other board members were able to be there one afternoon, and all those words, those wonderful adjectives that they used to describe their experiences, what they shared with us, when I came out of there, I felt their enthusiasm and their passion and their, and their, you know, their, it was just one, it was awesome, who said that? It was awesome, and I wish I could do that every year and have that, a chance to experience that, because they were terrific. Thank you.
Just wanted to say, I think all those words you all used described yourselves, and it's really, it's really inspirational to have this many people who will come out on your own time and work that hard, and I know you're all doing it for the children, and I must say, the last person in line deserves a prize. I know, you guys are, I mean, the other thing you all are is creative. Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, they, they were not aware that I was going to ask them to do that tonight, so that certainly was for the moment, but we will be learning together. I certainly have a lot to learn from them, so we will be meeting throughout the year and learning together, but, but I am very committed, and the school district is very committed to helping them grow, because there's just energy there, and it's such a synergy when they come together, that it's just amazing. So, I have great hope because of them and what they will do for children. Our thanks to Publix, Rutherford Boulevard, and to Mr. Rick Smith and Ms. June Bilbo for their donation of school supplies for the Black Blast Back to School event, and that event will be held August the 21st, it's going to be held at Canonsburg. So one of our partners, Parks and Rec, they've been very helpful. I attended a meeting today, and there were about twenty community agencies there that will be part of that, so I think it will be a great day for, for Murfreesboro City Schools and for the entire community.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Action items, unless there's something that you see that you either want removed or discussed, I'd ask for a motion at this time to approve them. Some move.
Second.
Has been a motion and a second, all in favor, board? Aye. Thank you so much. Action items, Dr. Gilbert?
For your first action item, I'd like for Lee Whitterson and Sarah Catalano and Natalie Hopkins, please to come to the podium. As you know, we value very much our relationship with teachers and our relationship with the Murfreesboro Education Association, and so I certainly appreciate these three individuals and their hard work, along with Gary Anderson, who also served on the negotiations team, but, but we have a real commitment to, to have that collaboration continue this year, and I'm very happy with the relationships that have been built and really appreciate your work. So, Lee, I'll let, I guess you're the thorn between two roses there.
Good evening. We are so happy to bring a contract for the 2010-11 school year for the board approval. Prior to the beginning of the school year, it's something that, that we spent many hours discussing and conferring on the points of the contract, and so we're very pleased to present with, with the changes involved, if, I'm sure you've had a chance to read those, if you'd like to give a summary of what those changes are. Under Association Leave Days, Article Three, I think it's under leaves, we've expanded the number of Association Leave Days from eight days to fifteen, and the other big item that required quite a bit of time was creating a unified payroll period for the new unified calendar. And so after much discussion and a meeting with teachers, we've come with a, we feel like is a good way to transition this year from the former dual calendar system to a unified calendar, and so we're pleased to present this to the board for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Whitterson, and the beautiful two ladies that are there presenting. Dr. Gilbert, so the roses that are standing with you. Board members, do you have any questions you want to ask?
I'd like to comment, I'd just like to commend everyone. I attended several negotiation sessions, I know how hard each side worked to put this contract together, and we are thrilled, as I know you are, that we're beginning a school year with a contract in place, and I think that, I want to commend all the teachers at large for being willing to go to a unified pay scale. I know there were lots of questions and some concerns initially, and that's understandable, but I think it will be very helpful to everyone involved, and it will save us money also, and we are in great need of being looking at how we can save money on, at every turn. So I thank you and I commend you for your work.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Kim?
Have all of the teachers, they have already voted in favor of this, am I correct?
Yes, we had a hundred percent vote yes.
And I'd just like to again thank all of you, it was, it's hard work for, for everybody involved, and I appreciate the professionalism with which you all dealt with this. This has been a really tough year, it's a really tough budget year, and the most important part of our system is our teachers, the most valuable part of our, of our system. It's not our buildings, it's not the central office, it's our teachers. So, you know, it's, it's not worth very much for, for me to tell you all what a fabulous job I think all the teachers have done. I mean, we have a really strong school system. They work hard, I've said for years that if I walk into a patient room and somebody's working, it's a teacher. Teachers don't leave it, they don't leave it at work. And I, I wish that, and I know that we will in the future be able to pay for the job that you do, but I'm, I'm sorry that it wasn't there this year, and I appreciate that you all understood that, I really do. And, you know, whenever we're trying to save money, I, you know, the best place for it to go is strong teachers. Appreciate what you all do.
Ms. Phillips?
I just wanted to echo those sentiments pretty much, too, because with the economy struggling like it is, you all deserve a great big whopping raise, and I wish to heavens that we had it to give you, and yet you're so professional that you're going to be in the classrooms, you know, working with those kids and making magic happen anyway, and that's why you should be what you are, teachers, you're just terrific, and I appreciate that. And I've been traveling a little bit this summer and meeting some teachers from other states, and they've been talking to me about what's been going on in, in their state, how they're having to lay off teachers, and I was shocked, you know, lay off music teachers, lay off art teachers, lay off, you know, these special things that, that make what happens in a student's life so, you know, it just enhances and enriches their educational experience, and, and it's frightening to me, and I'm so grateful that we're at least not having to do that in Murfreesboro City Schools. So thank you all for your hard work.
Hearing nothing else, I'll open for a motion for the approval.
I move we approve.
Second. Has been a motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you so much.
The second action item is board policies, and so I'm going to turn that over to Kelly.
All right, you have two board policies before you for first reading. One is a revision of the student use of internet policy. It's been revised to make it more parent-friendly, and also I have, there is board policy FM-15 that is a housekeeping policy for administrative procedures for Title I equipment. Would you like to take this separately or together?
I move we approve the, both of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Has been a motion and second, are there any questions? Hearing no questions, all in favor of passing these two policies, aye. Thank you so much, Ms. Davis.
Under reports and information, I'll do this tonight, but from now on, this will be rashed off. We have the completion of ninety days, we have Kathy Farrell, who is the Health Outreach Coordinator, who assists on that, and also Jessica Markham, who is the ESP Site Director at M&amp;E, M&amp;P, and for monthly revenue expenditure report, Gary Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. The monthly revenue report's behind tab four, this is the end of the year, so it's basically a hundred percent, it's not an audited figure, of course, because all the, all the bills aren't all in, and all the revenues aren't all in yet. We do, we go back and make adjustments to make that all fit together. Just as notes, the property tax collections are up a good, a good amount over last year, so we're real happy about that, that that's held steady, and our sales tax collections are down, we do have two more coming, and just keeping on the same collection level will be about $325,000 short of our revenues in those two categories for the year. Our BEP is all in, that's the Basic Education Program funding, is all, has all been collected, so we're up to date on that, but if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, we're at 98.7% of collections, we anticipate being over a hundred percent over because of the two more months of sales tax collections. Last year at this time, we were at 97.9, so we're, we're in a good position, we're not going to be, you know, jumping off buildings, we're not going to be tuning bugles on top of buildings either, we're, we're okay on revenues. On expenditures, we are at 95.8% at this point, last year we were at 97.5. Again, there are a few more things coming in on expenditures, on some bills, utility bills and stuff that haven't been processed yet, and those will all get put in, and then it'll be in our audit report, when you get your audit report later in the fall. So overall, we're, we're okay, we, we did have, you can see two categories that are, look like they're way over, one is in other support, 72810, down towards the bottom, and that's for the computer technology that we're taking out of the fund balance amount, so that's anticipated, and that will be adjusted at the end of the year, and the regular capital outlay, the 311, which is also way over, that's over by 311,000, and that is for the finish of the Black Fox roof. That's the, that wasn't completed in a full fiscal year last year, so we had to pick up some expenses this year, and that also will be out of fund balance. So overall, we're, we're doing okay, in good shape.
Ms. Phillips?
The other support that you talked about, the technologies, are they coming out of the technology fund, or the?
Yes, out of the fund balance, you have put a reserve in the fund balance for, identified towards technology, and that's where that'll come from.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson about expenditures?
I'd like to make a comment, that I, I think you all did an excellent job preparing this budget last year. Really tough thing to do, it's going to be a tough, you know, it was tough this, this past spring, too, and I think the, the fact that you've been really conservative has kept us out of a lot of hot water, so I really appreciate the hard work that you've done and the information you've gathered, and, and just been, you've been a really good steward of our money, so keep it up, this is really important, especially in this economy.
Thank you very much. Colleen Abell is the Finance Manager, and she really keeps a very close eye on all this, and I'd like to thank her very much publicly for what she does.
Did she get a vacation finally?
Did you let her go on vacation?
No.
If there are no other questions for Mr. Anderson, is there any other business at hand that you need to put on the agenda for next month?
No question. Yes, sir. The memo that we have pertaining to the fees, have we always charged fees? Am I just not remembering?
Each, each school and teachers send out a, a list of fees that they want to get for different, different things that they do. It varies greatly around the district. One of the things that the TCA says is that the board is to establish the fees charged, and the way we approached it this year was that not to exceed fee, so there'd be more consistency throughout the district, and, but every, just about every class has charged a fee of some form or fashion.
And it, it's not a, that's not a blanket fee, it's adding up all the different little things, the agenda, the T-shirt, the various things that they'll ask the parents to, to get at the beginning of the school year. So this, this dollar amount is just generally not to exceed that amount for all of the items asked.
So is, is this fee paid to the school, or is this just what we're saying, a parent should not exceed, should not need to exceed $20 for their child for the year except for fourth grade?
This, this is for fees that are charged through the school itself. Now, of course, parents may choose to buy different things for their children, but they're not part of the instructional day. So these are fees, like, like, as she had said, for, if they had a, an agenda book, which our schools, almost all are using agenda books, they might buy T-shirts, things like that. We did have one particular grade specific fee, and that's for the recorder, musical recorder, because every fourth grader does that, and we felt we needed to put that outside the control of the, of the maximum amount, and they had an extra $5 for that.
Okay, so then, every child is asked to pay a $20 fee?
No, no. No. It's, at the beginning of the year, when you, you go to your first class meeting with your teacher, they'll say, okay, we need to get a $10 field trip T-shirt, you need to bring, you need to purchase a $3 agenda for your child, you need to purchase, you know, something, a, a pack of paper from the bookstore, I only want you to use that, and you need to purchase it, and it's money that you're turning into the teacher for items the child's going to use during the instructional day, and this is just to give the teachers and the principals a guideline, that those items that we're asking parents to purchase for their child to use during the instructional day, the, the items that they're purchasing from the school should not exceed $20.
But they're not necessarily items that pertain to instruction and learning for the child?
Yeah, this doesn't include the, the supply, school supplies that the parents will send you.
Does not include.
No, it doesn't include school supplies, it's the items you have to write a check to the school for.
So these are the extras, so to speak. I mean, they're, they're not required, like the T-shirt, something else is not required for instruction, but it is required, or it is asked to be purchased for the betterment of the, the class, or whatever.
There are items that they're needing for the instructional day, such as the agenda. Now, granted, the field trip T-shirts, they aren't a necessity by any stretch of imagination, so they don't necessarily have to be purchased, but they are preferred for at least the same color T-shirt when they go on the field trips, I think they prefer.
What, what happens if I don't want to buy my child a T-shirt?
Then you just ask, say, the class color shirt is red, you're asked to send them in a red shirt when you're going on a field trip.
Okay, okay. That, that, that was my question, whether or not the fee was for per se instructional items, and?
It does include instructional items, and I don't have examples, you got the.
I have.
Give me some examples.
Okay, for, for example, there would be money for the cooking demonstrations, money for party class project, money for math facts, money for National Geographic Magazine, for the clay lady who comes and does a project with the children that they get to take home with, to their parents, for calculators, for chair pockets, for Tennessee Weekly Newspaper, all those things that the teachers are using to enhance their, their classroom curriculum activities they're charging field trip for. What we're trying to say is, some teachers ask for a lot of things, other teachers ask for hardly anything. We're trying to level it, so it's not, we're luck of the draw which teacher you get as far as how much you're going to have to pay. And since the board has to set the fees, the best way to do it is instead of bringing each individual fee up to you, to set a not-to-exceed amount.
Ms. Phillips has questions?
That makes sense to me, is trying to keep it, to level that, that playing field a little bit, that makes sense to me. It does seem like chair pockets would be something that belonged to the room, though. And what about children whose families perhaps aren't able to purchase the agendas and things like that? What happens with those kids?
Wonder. The, if a, the state law also has it that we can ask, and they do not have to pay.
Right.
So if they don't have it, the money, then we have to find a way to provide the item for them, or not use those items.
Okay. And so many times, I understand the PTOs and the PTA's are very good about kicking in a little bit.
Very supportive, yes.
They're wonderful with that, okay. Don't know what we do with that, those folks that work so hard. Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson.
Dr. Andrews?
And the City Schools Foundation, I think, has put aside money to help with schools that don't have as much money for PTA's, and through the PTA fundraiser, PTL fundraising.
Ms. Davis? At the bottom of this, it says staff recommends approval of this proposal, are you asking that the board approve this this evening? Is that what?
Yes, that was on the consent agenda.
Okay, that's what that was, I was wondering, okay, since we just saw that this evening. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion for an adjournment?
Some.
Second.
We are adjourned.
How we doing in August?